Please join us as we stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to ensure that everyone knows there's parking validation and bus passes are available for our Commission more shops and these meetings. Anyone parking for this meeting or using the bus can pick up passes from security on your way out this evening, and it will be valid for today. Also, let's take just a moment to express our gratitude for all those who provide the necessary labor to keep our county, our state, and our country running smoothly, and a special thanks to all those who were still working over this past Labor Day holiday weekend. We appreciate you. And an ethics reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing body in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, or readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote. And are there any questions on our consent about any items that are on our consent agenda this evening, Commissioners? Does any member of the public have any question about an item that's on the consent agenda? Okay, with that then, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and follow the rest of the agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And now it is time we'll have public comment. And we have the time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. When you come up here to the podium, you'll see the green light on when the yellow, that means you have approximately a minute left. And then at the red time, your time has expired, and please stop speaking and go ahead and sit down. So we give everyone the same amount of time. If your time expires and you still have something left, you can please leave that with Mr. Joyner, our clerk to the court, and he will ensure that we receive that. And Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak with us. And with that, we will begin, and I believe Jen Hampton is our first.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jen Hampton. I'm co-chair of Asheville Food and Beverage United and the Housing and Wages Organizer for Just Economics. And I'm here today to basically express the gratitude of workers in Buncombe County for this Board's commitment to making affordable housing, especially for the workforce that supports our tourism economy, a top priority. I've seen in my role at Just Economics just how committed each of you are to this issue. And I'm just, I feel really optimistic about that. As you know, we have the highest cost of living and the lowest average wages than any other region in the state, and this is driving workers away from working in our local industry. And what I've heard from workers is that if they can't afford to live here, they can't, they don't want to work here. And I think that's pretty sound logic. But if we keep driving people away from living here and working here, that's really going to have a detrimental effect on the tourism industry. And that's a pretty bleak outcome for Asheville, I think, and Buncombe County. Now, I know firsthand from meeting with so many of you, as well as county staff, that the county is working hard to find solutions to the affordable housing crisis. And I'm not here to tell you that you're not doing enough. You are. But I feel like it's important to also let the public know that we need help too. And we know that you don't have a lot of control over what the TDA does with the LIFT Fund, which is, you know, why we're here today, is to talk about the TDA LIFT Fund. I kind of left that out in the beginning. But we know you don't have a lot of control over that, but we're hoping that you can, you know, advocate that they grant some of that money from the LIFT Fund to agencies that are doing work on affordable housing. And we also need your help in advocating for changes to zoning laws that would make building affordable housing easier. And we need your help in educating the public about the importance of affordable housing and why it's not just a problem for low-income workers. Affordable housing is a problem for all of us. It's a problem for our economy. It's a problem for our schools, and it's a problem for our quality of life. So thank you again for your commitment to this issue. We know you're working hard, and we appreciate it. We just ask that you keep working hard and that you keep us in the loop and keep us in mind. So thank you.
Ben Williamson?
Good evening, y'all. Earlier this year, myself and others were encouraged to build a community coalition to generate support, to use the TDA's newly-created LIFT Fund to address our county's most pressing need, affordable housing. So that's what we did. Four local community groups formed a coalition and organized a two-month canvassing campaign, acquiring well over 2,000 signatures of support for two asks: that LIFT Funds be used for housing and that service worker representation be placed on the LIFT Committee. This was not a social media campaign. Dozens of volunteers gave hundreds of hours across multiple canvases, engaging in thousands of face-to-face conversations on front porches and city streets. Besides canvassing, coalition members mobilized and spoke at the TDA, met with members of this body, City Council, the General Assembly, and various community groups. Now we wait on the TDA's LIFT Committee selection process, which concludes this month. While it's extremely difficult to recruit hourly service workers to an unpaid, uncertain, and unfamiliar committee, we were very excited to endorse James Sutherland's application, former owner of Blue Dream Curry House. James brings eight years of experience as a downtown business owner, balancing the perspectives and realities of ownership while prioritizing living wages for all staff, employee sales bonuses, and management of the challenges and opportunities that exist downtown. James built a highly loyal staff and customer base, and our coalition feels confident he would bring a valuable perspective to the LIFT Committee's work. We're hopeful he's appointed in a few weeks. Then we wait on the LIFT Grant Awards in Spring '24. We were very excited to see your own budget work include accessing TDA funds for affordable housing and making the clear connection that helping housing become more accessible for workers also supports tourism. Our campaign has adopted a collaborative, respectful, and solution-focused approach. Our asks are realistic and attainable. We're asking for service workers to have a voice comprising one-ninth of a TDA subcommittee, and for yearly funds to support housing that won't subtract a cent from the TDA's marketing budget. We believe these asks are easy wins for the TDA and are backed by thousands of local residents and multiple elected leaders, and can send a strong message to the community that the TDA is ready to join the large network of resources needed to support workers and families. So we came tonight to update you on the campaign's work, keep this issue present, and we're so appreciative, as Jen said, of the many initiatives this Board has taken to improve the quality of life in our county. We look forward to continuing to support your efforts, and thank you for the push to build this grassroots coalition. We're optimistic it will yield results. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And Andrew Paul?
My name is Andrew Paul. I'm a lead organizer with Asheville for All. And just like other folks here, I want to express support for the TDA using money from its new LIFT Fund towards housing for the people that make the tourism economy run. And I know that you all have been working to put a little pressure on the TDA around this stuff, so we're here to say thank you and to say keep it up. But really, I want to talk about why I personally am in solidarity with our service and tourism workers. See, I'm not a service worker, and I do not qualify for income-restricted housing. But my family still struggles with costs. My two kids share a bedroom, and I'd like them to have rooms of their own. I'd like them to grow up in a walkable neighborhood. So I'm here as part of this campaign because I believe that we will all benefit from LIFT Funds being applied to homes for working people. And here's sort of a simple illustration why. For every group of restaurant workers, young people, that may be joined together to rent a three-bedroom house, if we can find them better options, more suitable options, more affordable options, maybe closer to downtown, that means less pressure on the market for three-bedroom homes, and that helps me. So more housing at all income levels actually helps all of us. It helps working people at every stage of their life. So I've got skin in the game. We all do. And that's because scarcity spreads, and scarcity makes things worse everywhere and for everyone. Everyone except landlords and REITs. We know that housing costs drive inflation. Well, there was a news report just last month that the city of Minneapolis had actually beaten inflation, and they did it with a few things. They got rid of exclusionary zoning. They got rid of parking mandates. Some of y'all know, I love to talk about that stuff. But the other thing they did was they created programs to subsidize homes for the people that needed it the most. And the result was actually lower inflation in that city. I work two jobs, and I'm a full-time dad with toddlers because I can't afford daycare. That's because scarcity has led to inflation. Now we have no daycare. So most people in this county can benefit if we use the substantial LIFT money to attack our housing scarcity, and in this case, to attack it from the bottom up and to combine it with other approaches. And just imagine if the TDA could say, hey, we beat inflation, so come here. Our beers are cheaper than in Charleston or Savannah or whatever. You know, talk about marketing. There's the marketing right there. So we can do this. We can join in solidarity. That means we all have a common interest, and we can attack our housing shortage from the bottom up. Thanks.
Sharon Alexander?
I am Sharon Alexander. I practice law in Hendersonville, and I'm here today on behalf of my client, the Alma Kay Spicer Family Limited Partnership. This partnership owns a four-plus-acre tract in the county that's located in the Fairview area, where during the '60s and '70s, the county operated a landfill. And this was during the time period before landfills were very regulated like they are today, and the county allowed hazardous substances to be placed in this landfill. A review of both your records and a lot of articles in the Citizen Times during this time period leave no question that this was a county-managed, operated landfill. An example is on January 9th of '73, the Citizen Times reported that then-Commissioner Sarah Radcliffe was negotiating new lease with the owners of my client's property for the county's use of, quote, "Fairview and Chandler Landfills operated by the county," citing that the previous leases had expired. The same offer, the same article repeatedly refers to the, quote, "county's network of landfills," end quote, to include the Fairview landfill that was then being operated by the county. There's numerous other articles in the Citizen Times that reflect the county's operation of a landfill in Fairview on my client's property. In your records, for example, on September 18th of 1973, the commissioners established user fees for all the county's network of landfills, which would have included my client's property, so the county generated revenue from its use. In 1995, this property was designated as a superfund site, and some work was done then. The state did more remedial work between 2016 and 2018. Property is now subject to a declaration of perpetual land use restrictions that includes obligations for the landowner, which bring with it expenditures. My client's predecessor and title agreed that that was the right thing to do to enter into that. My client, at this point, asked that the county take ownership of this property that are willing to convey it to the county and take responsibility for maintaining it and all that comes with ownership because the county did not properly manage this and allowed the contamination. Thank you for your time.
And Ronald Gates?
Pastor Ronald Gates of Greater Works Church of God in Christ. All right, school in session. The first thing I want to reiterate is in regards to the North Carolina General Statute. According to General Statute 14-190.13, it talks about harmful materials that qualify material to performance of depicting sexual explicit nudity or sexual activities that would take as whole. It also talks about materials, pictures, drawings, videos, recordings, or films, or visual depictions, or representative materials that consist in such. We're going to do reading first. You have in your possession a drawing, a drawing of a, a drawing of genitals, a vagina and penis that is actually in one of the school books in the Buncombe County School. And I can go on and on about the many books that are gratifying sexuality, pornography, gratifying drug abuse, gratifying rape. So on this handout right here, for your class attendance in art, I would need your name at the top. What you are to do, this is one of the students, is to write, and this is what it is, graphic. You're to write your name on there. You're to write what the general part, the genital part, the penis or the vagina, where it's located on the man or the woman, and then what is the use of it while we're doing reading class? So definitely would like to make sure that you will put your name on it, and then turn it back in to me. I'd love to have that back by the end of class here. So the reading portion, you got where it's highlighted, it begins to talk about touching. It begins to share that you are to stroke your penis and insert your finger in the anus. Your finger should go on the inside of her vagina. Now, this is immoral for people that have morals and principles that do not allow their children to, you know, even to discuss such erroneous things, but you got it in the school system. I sent y'all packages asking for opportunity time to talk with you. But here, I guess you just blew me off. Then it talks about oral sex. You know, you'll put your mouth on the partner's penis or genital area, and then you are to use your tongue in a good way that your teeth don't hurt. Then, for the closing, anus sex. Here it is. You know, you're to penetrate the person with your finger or sex toy. This is erroneous. You should. I don't know who's the pervert or who's the child molester.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I am rather short. I may speak more fast than I would like to, but I'm going to try to slow down. And I just want to say thank you so much for y'all being here, listening, and doing the work that you're doing as public servants. My name is Emily Argonata, and I'm a native of Buncombe County. And I am here from Asheville Food and Beverage United, and we are a worker-led coalition that works to empower and advocate for service workers in Asheville. I'm here primarily to tell you about my personal experience. I've been working in food and beverage since I was 17, I believe, here in Asheville. And throughout the years, I have off and on gone back to it, primarily as a dishwasher. Well, most folks don't think I look like that, but I'd just like to again thank you as the others did about your backing of what we're trying to do with the TDA and get representation for workers. We service workers, we are effectively invisible. We are the silent, unseen people who keep this tourism economy going. We experience sexual harassment. We're increasingly concerned about walking to our vehicles in the late night hours throughout the county, not just in town. And notably, when the bus no longer runs, say, when we go home, obviously, we're on limited hours days such as Sunday or holidays, which is big days for us. We have no protections with the NC Labor Board. I've been denied all things from that. When the living wage is over $20 an hour, a restaurant and business is slow, and owners cut workers' shifts short, including closing the kitchen and shutting down early. That cuts into tips and wages. And we deal with the ups and downs of the season that we all know about. And often, the most, the slowest season is when it's the beginning of the year. And as we all know, that's kind of a slower season for everybody. And so it's not just restaurant workers that are impacted by this and have reduced hours and come in those slow months. Everything from the people that clean Airbnbs, which I do that too, local event industry, wedding industry professionals, as well as the events and entertainment, who also are largely made up of service employees. This part I might going to go through because I just like kind of put it together, and it's so, I'm going to try to go a little bit faster. This is the most important part to me. And I prepared these statements in June when we spoke directly to the TDA, and I have a development in my personal life that I think is really relevant to share. Is that the end? Okay, well, I just really appreciate you guys, and I will leave it. I'll send it to the clerk of court. And...
Commissioner May, interrupt real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you said clerk or court, and she just repeated she'll send her statement to clerk or court. Is that she, the clerk to the Board?
The clerk to the Board, right here.
Pass it to him, not the clerk of court. Just wanted to make sure I addressed that.
Yes, thank you. And Nina Tovish?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nina Tovish. I'm an engaged resident of Asheville and Buncombe County and president of Sustain ABL, an organization whose mission is to ensure that we have a healthy community to support a thriving, a healthy economy to support a thriving community. And I'm here to support the others who have spoken here on behalf of generating more affordable housing for our region. About 11 years ago, I had made the decision to come to Asheville, leaving Washington, DC, where I had lived for almost 20 years. And one of the main reasons I decided to do that was because I could afford to. It was the end of the recession, and I squeaked in just under the wire. I was able to find land I could afford and build an extremely cheap house, which I live in to my great relief to the present day. That was one reason I moved here. The other reason I moved here was because of the people who are already here. The half dozen times that I visited Asheville, first in a touristic way and subsequently as a prospective resident, I met the kindest, most welcoming, most diverse, both in age and demographics and in occupation. I met a broad spectrum of people who had chosen to make this region their home and who were engaged in a broad range of livelihoods. Since moving here, those people were the most welcoming, hospitable people it has ever been my privilege to meet, and I knew that I could make this area my home and be welcomed and be part of this community. And that has led me to want to serve this community in as many different ways as I I hope that we can find a way, working together, to ensure that the people who make Asheville and Buncombe County the marvelous place that it is to visit, a place where those who serve can also afford to live. Most people will not have the opportunity that I did to find an affordable home relatively easily. You have the opportunity to help ensure that those doors open once again and that the people who already live here can imagine that their children will be able to afford to live and work here as well. Thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you. And I believe that was all that has signed up for public comment. Thank you all very much. And now we have a presentation from Commissioner Edwards. I think it's, oh, wait, did I miss? Okay, so there are a couple more folks. Yes, thank you, Lamar. Yes, please go ahead and come on over. And when you get over here, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Diane Finn, and I'm here to speak on behalf of using LIFT, the LIFT portion of TDA for affordable housing. I moved to Asheville four years ago from New Jersey after I retired from my work as a clinical social worker. Unlike many of my local senior citizen peers, who mostly travel in homogeneous circles of the financially comfortable, I have another window into our Asheville community. A year and a half ago, I resumed work as a clinical social worker and now work at All Souls Counseling Center. Our clients are low-income people seeking outpatient counseling who lack financial resources to be able to afford private psychotherapy. We offer mental health counseling at a deeply reduced rate and turn no one away for inability to pay. Over this time, I've worked with many people who work in our service industries. Some of my clients are servers in restaurants, several work in supermarkets, some work in retail downtown, and others are trying to make it as artists. My exposure to this segment of our society has given me a view into what life is like for this end of the wage scale. Securing adequate housing is a struggle for many of them. Some have lived in shared housing in which they get one bedroom and share living quarters. Some have had to move out of Asheville to nearby communities, and a few have spent time couch surfing until something is opened up. For people struggling with depression or anxiety, this added stress is an additional burden. I myself have personal experience with the affordability of the areas' rents, rental rates. When I moved here to an apartment complex in the fall of 2019, my rent was an affordable $1,200 a month. When I moved out two years later in the fall of 2021, I learned that my two-bedroom unit would now be listed at $2,000 a month. That is over a 50% increase in two years. The Citizen Times reports that Asheville rents have increased 36% over the course of the last two years, and the organization Buncombe Decides states that 40% of renters are cost-burdened. I believe it is incumbent on city and county government to address this lack of affordable housing. Using money raised through one of our main industries, tourism, seems like a very appropriate thing to do. Money from the LIFT portion should be directed towards developing housing for those who work... and turn no one away for inability to pay. Over this time, I've worked with many people who work in our service industries. Some of my clients are servers in restaurants, several work in supermarkets, some work in retail downtown, and others are trying to make it as artists. My exposure to this segment of our society has given me a view into what life is like for this end of the wage scale. Securing adequate housing is a struggle for many of them. Some have lived in shared housing in which they get one bedroom and share living quarters. Some have had to move out of Asheville to nearby communities. And a few have spent time couch surfing until something has opened up. For people struggling with depression or anxiety, this added stress is an additional burden. I myself have personal experience with the affordability of the areas' rents, rental rates. When I moved here to an apartment complex in the fall of 2019, my rent was an affordable $1,200 a month. When I moved out two years later in the fall of 2021, I learned that my two-bedroom unit would now be listed at $2,000 a month. That is over a 50% increase in two years. The Citizen Times reports that Asheville rents have increased 36% over the course of the last two years. And the organization Buncombe Decides states that 40% of renters are cost-burdened. I believe it is incumbent on city and county government to address this lack of affordable housing. Using money raised through one of our main industries, tourism, seems like a very appropriate thing to do. Money from the Lyft portion should be directed towards developing housing for those who work in the service industry who keep our tourism attractions running. About twenty years ago, I went on vacation in Mexico. My family had a rental car, and we drove out of our very comfortable little...
Okay, all right. Thank you. And did I see someone else that had wanted to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, County Commission, and all of the folks who are here tonight. My name is the Reverend Mike Riordan. I am the Associate Rector at Grace Episcopal Church in Asheville here on Merriman Avenue. And though I had only planned to speak on one topic tonight, I do feel the need to briefly address comments on sexual education in our school system as well. As a county citizen and as a representative of our faith community, I find it is important to state that I am unequivocally supportive of safe and appropriate sex education for our county's children. I believe, in fact, this is the way to keep our children safest when they know what their bodies are and what they are for. Secondly, and somehow more lightly, I am here speaking on behalf of, first, myself, my church, and our collaborative effort, Safe Shelter, to voice my support for the authorization of ARPA funds for our shelter effort, along with the Salvation Army and Haywood Street Respite, all of whom who have pledged to increase their sheltering capacity in order to reduce the current gap between available and needed beds in our community. I am deeply grateful for those who work with Hayek, particularly those on the Shelter Work Group who have helped us, as well as the Buncombe County Commission and Asheville City Council for their assistance, their support, and their knowledge throughout this process. You all have been passionate, helpful, and I am deeply appreciative of all that you have offered us during this time. So, I voice my support for the authorization of ARPA funds for our shelter project, and thank you again. Good evening.
Thank you, Reverend. Did I miss anyone else that wanted to speak? Okay, thank you very much. And now, we have a presentation that Commissioner Edwards will share with us. It's a proclamation.
Do we have representatives for Manah Food Bank? This is a proclamation for Manah Food Bank. Whereas Manah Food Bank is the central food sourcing and disaster relief organization providing life-sustaining food resources for residents in the sixteen westernmost counties of North Carolina, including the Quella Boundary. And whereas Manah began food distribution operations in 1983 and this year celebrating its fortieth anniversary. And whereas Manah works to empower the communities it serves by involving, educating, and uniting people in the work of ending hunger in western North Carolina. And whereas, Manah is the primary source of food resources for over 250 partner organizations in western North Carolina and has distributed a staggering 300 million pounds of food in its forty-year history. And whereas, Manah and Buncombe County have partnered for the last decade to provide food and resources to the community through the county's community engagement markets. And whereas, Manah provides a free food helpline as a source of information for neighbors seeking food resources and meal programs in their community and to receive assistance in applying for longer-term food benefits. And whereas, making weekend food accessible to the one in four children that will face food insecurity in western North Carolina is a vital piece of Manah's work through the distribution of over 122,000 Manah packs for kids in the last fiscal year alone. And whereas, Manah holds a commitment to serving marginalized communities in both urban and rural environments in ways that value who they are, their lived experiences, and their unique barriers to accessing food. And whereas, the county has supported and will continue to support Manah through regular food drives where employees and the community alike can contribute. And whereas, Manah prioritizes the health and well-being of the neighbors in its service area by advocating at the national, state, and local level for those living in and experiencing the effects of poverty. Now therefore be it resolved that Brownie Newman, by virtue of the authority vested in him as Chairman of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 5th as Manah Food Bank Day to commemorate and celebrate Manah Food Bank's forty years of positive impact on the residents of western North Carolina. We know how important the work is of Manah Food Bank to our community and beyond Buncombe County. We hope that you're here for another forty years and beyond. And I'm also excited to announce that, starting September 25th, Buncombe County Libraries will be collecting food for Manah Food Bank for a two-week period. And there's more information on our county website about specifically what items Manah Food Bank needs over this two-week period.
Thank you all so much. My name is Claire Neal. I'm the CEO for Manah Food Bank. And on behalf of all of us at Manah and all those who are engaged in this mission of ending hunger in western North Carolina, I want to thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for bringing raised awareness to this issue. We know that folks all across western North Carolina are struggling right now. And so, we feel incredibly blessed to have a community that cares so deeply for our neighbors and is so committed to making sure that no one in our region goes hungry. So, thank you again for your partnership, and thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you, Claire, and thank you, Commissioner Edwards. And now, it looks like we will be having a presentation from the Early Childhood Education Committee. I believe Commissioner Moore and Carol Steen.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having our committee provide you with this annual update today. My name is Carol Steen. For those of you all who haven't had the pleasure to meet, I wear a hat in the community as a human resources professional. I've been committed to workforce development in this community for over thirteen years as a resident of Buncombe County. And I'm really delighted and privileged to have this opportunity to represent our committee and provide you an update on the work that's gone on over the last twelve months with regard to early childhood education. So, thank you for having me. Likely, Commissioner Moore, does it need an introduction to those in the audience and those online? So, if you allow me, I'll just jump right in. So, as you all are aware, the Early Childhood Development Fund was developed in 2018 by resolution to allow for funds to be set aside initially at $3.6 million with the annual increase at 2% per year. And in fiscal year 2023, that amount was $3.82 million. That was to be set aside for issuing two grant applications that were in support of early childhood education. And why that's important for me and my enthusiasm for participating on this committee because I have two young children myself. They're well beyond the years of early childhood education. But it's so important that those that recognize the need for growth of talent in our workforce community invest in the first 2,000 days of a child's development. And so, that's really important for not only myself as a parent, but community members altogether to address the early childhood education crisis that our community is facing. You're so good at this. Okay, great. You might need to help me to...
Sure.
...the next slide. So, the committee is made up of fifteen individuals, and our goal is really to engage with the community partners. And one thing that I've really appreciated and enjoyed is the site visits that have allowed me to get to know the nonprofit organizations and community organizations that have really put in the work on a day-to-day to help support our youth within the community and provide that early education for our youth. And you'll hear today from Buncombe County Partnership for Children on the efforts that they're doing, amongst others that Commissioner Moore will talk about, their successes with regard to supporting access and quality early childhood education. Our committee also engages with soliciting public input to ensure that we're listening to the community about the needs within Buncombe County and making sure that there are policy and funding recommendations that support the people here within the county. I want to take this time to share that there are currently vacancies. So, if anyone's listening in the audience or online and really wants to get engaged on the issue, we welcome you to visit Buncombe County's webpage to access the application and express your interest in how those funds are allocated. And then lastly, I just wanted to talk about the funding strategies for fiscal year 2023. We're really focused on increasing slots within the community and ensuring that we close that gap of need for access to early childhood education and also addressing that through the development of and diversifying the workforce within Buncombe County to meet the need of having early childhood education professionals that can provide that quality education to enhance the first 2,000 days. And with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Moore to provide an update on the grain cheese for this year.
Thank you very much. So, it is my pleasure to serve on this committee with great folks like Carol, Commissioner Whitesides, Commissioner Beach Ferrara, who have really laid a great groundwork for us. Just so you all can see on the slide there, we have for fiscal year 2023, after what I'm sure Commissioner Whitesides will vouch for, a very exhaustive, rigorous, time-consuming, coffee-needing process of looking at all the applications. We got a great group of applicants. We had a, I think it's a record number compared to what we've had previous years, all of which high-quality, very diverse set of folks here in terms of where in the county they're located, what type of work they do, how, what demographics they serve. And just really, it became a challenge to figure out who was doing the best of the best because all of the folks who applied ended up putting forward these amazing applications. So, you can see some of them there. AB Tech is one of our particularly good on workforce development. Asheville Jewish Community Center, Bent Creek, Buncombe County Schools, Werner Center for Early Learning. I'm not going to read them all to you, but you can just see from that, across Buncombe County, we're hitting every part of this. And the geography is really key when we're talking about how to best serve the kids in these first 2,000 days. And there is a graphic, just so you can see, all throughout Buncombe County. So, every commissioner district is kind of corresponding there. You can see one, two, and three certain areas that we want to develop and grow. But we have a healthy number in every part of our town. And that was a really big objective of the folks who are serving this go-round. Looking forward for funded projects, things that we focused on and we're really proud to highlight here, behavioral health support, classroom supplies and furnishings. Teacher pay is always going to be a big one. And workforce development seems to be our focus this go-round. Looking this year at how we grow that body of early childhood professionals who are ready to step up and help us meet our goals of the county. As we're growing, as our kids need to be served, we need qualified professionals to do this. And it's not easy right now. A lot of y'all are very familiar, certainly the commission's familiar with how much our teachers are going through at the moment. And this is a big part of how we're offsetting that. But I think it's only gonna work with continued investment. And I'm grateful to serve on a committee that we've... Looking forward, we are looking at investing further, as Carol astutely noted. So, for performance reporting, grant awards are administered via performance contracts. So, quarterly, we are reviewing all the folks in terms of what they, whether they're meeting the metrics that are set for them. It's not a group of folks that are going without regulation or supervision. They're just really meeting the challenge. And we've been very pleasantly surprised with how well almost all of these groups are doing. And even the areas where we need to improve, a lot of it's around staffing and figuring out how we build that workforce in an area that we desperately need without nearly enough professionals to fill the void. And that's a national problem, not just in Buncombe County. For those who are curious, grant reports are published on our Early Childhood Fund website. You can see it there, buncombecounty.org/grants. And while you're there, you should consider applying if we haven't made that pitch strong enough already. So, before I go too far into this, we have a presentation coming up from our Buncombe Partnership for Children. So, I might invite y'all to come up soon and join me. For performance results, fiscal year July 2022 through 2023, 69% of all goals for the projects were met across 22 different funded projects. That is a remarkable success rate for a group of folks who are challenged with not just funding, but really retention, trying to hang on to people, is already a challenge. And for almost 70% of them to hit the goals is no small feat, especially given the rigorous standards that we set out for them. Most difficult goals to attain this year involve enrollment. That is something we have very little control over as programs themselves. Parents have to enroll them. There's a myriad of challenges around what might be a barrier to enrolling your child, some of that being the geography that we focus so hard on. But good success on goals related to student achievement. So, that means that when our students are participating, they're doing really well. The kids are thriving in these programs, and that's really what we want to see. Some things we can't control, but this is one that we are very proud. All of our programs are doing fantastic on that. Examples of success, I won't read them all to you, but just so you can see, YWCA is one of our 292 parents improve their education or income status. That's amazing. We're addressing this from a very comprehensive sense. Seventeen participants in the bilingual early childhood cooperative network. We're hitting all parts of our population, trying to be as inclusive as possible. And with the number of Spanish speakers in our county, it's becoming even more critical that we reach out and we build those bridges so that everyone can feel included in these programs. So, I think the next slide is for y'all. Want to come up?
Good evening. I'm Amy Berry from Buncombe Partnership for Children. In 2021, after commissioners prioritized pre-K expansion and the County Early Child Care and Education and Development Fund identified NC pre-K as the model to invest in, Buncombe Partnership for Children recommended six strategies to stabilize NC pre-K after COVID and to fill the gaps in state funding of the program so that the program, so that childcare centers are able to offer NC pre-K and that families are better able to access the program. As the Executive Director at Buncombe Partnership for Children, I want to thank you for granting ARPA funds to us so that we could engage in this critical work. And now, I want to hand it over to Deanna Lamott, our NC pre-K Expansion Director, who will share progress from our first year.
Thank you. So, tonight, I'm going to give a very, very brief overview of some of the achievements that we've been able to reach in the first year of this funding and then a quick highlight at some strategies that are gonna be starting in year two. So, the first strategy that we knew we had to do was to fully fund this program. In the fall of 2021, when this was identified as a priority, we had no childcare providers in Buncombe County who were ready or willing to expand their NC pre-K slots or take on NC pre-K as a program, largely because they couldn't hire and retain the licensed birth-to-kindergarten licensed teachers that are required. We knew we had to start any kind of pilot work, any kind of filling gaps with fully funding this program so that it was feasible for programs to offer it. And so, we're, the first priority, the first strategy was to increase the slot reimbursement rates and also to provide funds so that programs could pay their more veteran teachers for those years of valuable experience. Because of the Buncombe County investment, NC pre-K teachers who hold exactly the same license as a kindergarten teacher in our K-12 schools were finally paid the same as K-12 teachers last year. This resulted in an average of $8,500 raise for NC pre-K teachers. Lead teacher retention happily was really strong after that. The 90% that you see up on the screen is overall, but our private centers, where the teachers were making the least, and they have just the least resources to support this program, our private centers actually had teacher retention at 97% in a time when teacher retention across the board in early education is abysmal and the biggest struggle of most programs. The thing that excites me most, though, about this slide and this first year of progress is that this first year, we had four new locations, four new sites, apply to be NC pre-K providers and be approved. That's two years after nobody in the county wanted to do it. And that is all thanks to the... And that is all thanks to the investment that you've made in early childhood and the NC pre-K program specifically. The next strategy that I want to talk about that also launched last year, it's called Higher Education Supports. This was also in response to our providers talking about how hard it was to identify and retain qualified teachers. So for several years now, Buncombe Partnership for Children has had a workforce development program that focused on bringing new teachers into the early childhood field. But what this money helped us do was to really focus on the teachers who have been in this field, who are working full-time and want, wanted to be, you know, better educated, more professional in their field. So last year, we had 26 participants in this program. The average years of experience of those participants was almost 11 years. These are people dedicated to early childhood but have never been able to complete degrees, never been able to go to that next level to be an NC pre-K teacher and make that higher salary and further their profession. This year, we have close to 35 participants and a waiting list. It's a very popular program. And 100% of the participants in this program reported to us that the, these supports are more likely, make it more likely that they will stay in the early childhood field. The other strategy that was kind of expanded, it was birthed a few years earlier, but grew significantly last year, is this coordinated outreach and enrollment. And this is a strategy focused on helping families navigate a really fractured system, especially families who are eligible for NC pre-K and/or Head Start, a federal program and a state program that touch the same families and kind of have different, different systems and different eligibility and make life pretty confusing for some of our families. So we, this, we have an easy-to-use online application system where families can apply to both programs with one application and have kind of one system that we, behind the scenes, do all the navigating of the different, the different programs and requirements. We also have a bilingual coordinator who really walks hand-in-hand with families through that program, through that process of applying and enrolling, of making sure that they've found a site that meets the needs of their children and such. Eighty-eight percent of the families who applied last year were able to place their, get their child placed in their first choice because we really prioritize family choice. And the folks who did not get their first choice, most of those were people who prioritized a site that didn't actually meet the needs that they stated somewhere else in their application. But because we have that bilingual human who's looking at these applications early, she could go back to those families and work with them to say, like, you've asked for this Head Start site, but you need after-school care and that's not an option. Is that, is that what you want? How do we, how do we make sure we're meeting your needs? Families have craved this kind of clarity. And I will say that our coordinator is so popular now that she's getting calls for help for other things. She's gotten families calling her and saying, could you please help my kindergartner enroll? And all kinds of other things because families have found her so helpful at navigating this hard stuff. And lastly, this, this slide is about some things that are coming up. I know my time is short, but we are going to be working with 10 classrooms this year to get, to build capacity and build quality so that they are NC pre-K ready in future years as the state allot more slots in our community. Another way that we're getting, getting ready and expanding slots as much as we can. And the last thing, the strategies five and six, these things in reality work very closely together. Wraparound or that after-school extended daycare and transportation. We have a list of small kind of pilot activities. We're going to be working with providers to try to make sure families, even though with the staffing crisis, we can't just hire lots of van drivers right now. People laugh at us when we kind of suggested looking for drivers, really. But we're doing lots of things to work with families, find with gas cards, extra car seats, all kinds of things to help them be able to arrange transportation, working with the YMCA to pilot some, some summer, kind of summer camp-ish things for NC pre-K students who don't have care through the summer. So that is also a big learning, learning experience for us as well, hearing what families are asking for, what we think are solutions might not be the solutions that families are going to identify as the things that they need help from us on. So in one year, you've made tremendous progress. This, this, the funds in our community have made NC pre-K a program that is feasible for providers to offer and a program that's desirable by parents and families. So I am grateful for that and I am hopeful that when this pilot funding ends next summer, that the county can, can come up with the creativity and the resources so that these teachers continue to make a real salary that they deserve and families have these locations and these slots to put their children in high-quality care. Thank you.
So I will stand in the hot seat one time here. It's a lot different on this side. Any questions about the presentation or the work that we're doing on early childhood?
Commissioners, questions?
I think this is great work. And several years ago, when I was a member of the Hunt Institute, we had a full day with early childhood educators. And the one comment that has stuck with me for the last two years is hearing the NC pre-K teachers that were there say, I just want to be paid and treated with the same dignity and respect as a K-12 teacher. And thinking about how we know our K-12 teachers are often treated and disrespected, hearing that from our pre-K teachers really spoke to me about how they are treated and often the conditions that they must work in. So it's really exciting to see the work that is happening on that level, particularly to increase their pay and hopefully their dignity and respect as professional educators for our children too. So thank you all so much.
And I'd be remiss if I did not give a heartfelt thank you to our staff that's here. Just do amazing work. Every meeting is seamless and we're really able to focus on the policy issues behind all the things that we're talking about. And that's thanks to our staff. So thank you all. You can stand up if you want, get recognized.
Yeah, yeah, let's give them a hand.
Thank you all.
Thank you all very much. And I believe now the county manager has a couple items on her report. Do you want to introduce that?
Thanks, Commissioner. I'm looking at DK and Eva to come up and be introduced as our new lead NC fellow. You recall last year, that was our first year as being a lead site. And we had Mylan Patton to be that person for us this year. And we were able to be successful again with the net application this year. And DK is going to introduce that employee.
Thank you, Avro. We are so excited to have another year with an AmeriCorps fellow. We feel like we were able to create a very successful year last year for our previous fellow. And we're excited about the work that Eva's going to do. Eva is a native of Charlotte, North Carolina, and a recent graduate from Appalachian State with a Bachelor's of Science in Criminal Justice and International Studies, as well as a Bachelor of Science in Political Science, International and Comparative Politics with minors in Judaic, Holocaust, and Peace Studies. Eva's going to be working with us on projects that range from behavioral health planning, economic development, research and analysis, sustainability, and racial equity work. So would just like for you all to welcome and help us welcome Eva Davis to the county.
Welcome, Eva. It's a pleasure to have you. Did you want to say a few words?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm very excited and grateful for this opportunity. And I'm very excited to start my year serving Buncombe County.
Thank you. We're excited to have you with us. And I believe Ellis?
He's going to be online and the ESL interpreter, we are getting her set up today.
Good evening.
Hi, Ellis. We're getting the ESL interpreter set up and then you're ready to go. We'll tell you as soon as she's set up and ready.
Sounds good.
You can see her. Okay, Ellis, you can go. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to present some important information this evening. I apologize, I'm not there in person, but I appreciate the opportunity over Zoom. So this evening, I'm going to present some information about how we can all prepare for upcoming fall respiratory virus season. So of course, here in our beautiful county, fall brings beautiful colors, cooler weather, but unfortunately it can also bring some different viruses with it. Typically, we see influenza, also commonly known as the flu, respiratory syncytial virus, also known as RSV, and also COVID-19. So now is really the time to prepare to protect yourself and your families from these viruses with prevention and treatment measures because we do have tools to help reduce risk, test, treat illness, and keep viruses from spreading. So right now, we're really encouraging community members to stay up to date with their vaccines, seek testing and treatment when needed, and practice basic protective measures like hand washing, covering your nose and mouth when you cough or sneeze, and staying home when sick. So first, I'm going to dive into COVID-19. And let's talk about what metrics are we monitoring now? In the past, you might remember, we were monitoring individual case numbers. But when the public health emergency ended in the spring, individual cases and deaths are no longer reportable to local public health departments by law. So we're using surveillance data similar to how we have tracked flu for years. So on this slide on the top, you can see at the national level, the CDC does have a COVID data tracker. And they're looking at metrics such as new COVID-19 hospital admissions. And this is the one that we're really going to focus on for recommendations. They're also looking at percent of deaths that were COVID-19 by state, percent of emergency department visits diagnosed with COVID-19, and percent positivity of COVID NAT tests by region in the country. And the NAT tests are the ones that you think of when you go to a pharmacy or your provider and it is then sent off to a laboratory test for testing. This is not the home kits. And then you can see down here at the bottom, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, or NCDHHS, they now have a respiratory surveillance dashboard. So they're monitoring all three of the viruses, COVID-19, flu, and RSV. They're looking at emergency department visits for all three of those viruses. They're looking at COVID-19 and flu hospital admissions. And they're also looking at COVID-19 wastewater monitoring. So let's dive in and see what are the metrics telling us right now? And here on this first slide is looking at the national trends. So this is trends for hospitalizations or hospital admissions as well as deaths. The hospital admissions is typically updated on Mondays, but due to the holiday yesterday, it was not updated. So this information is a little lagging. But in looking at both of these, we can see the trend has been increasing over the last month to six weeks. So the last time this was updated, the hospital admissions had increased by 18.8%. And the deaths had increased by 17.6%. This next slide here shows you a visualization of the whole country using, you'll see the green, the yellow, and the red. And you can drill down to individual counties using this map. And this is looking at new hospital admission rates per 100,000 population. And once again, this was not updated yesterday due to the holiday per the CDC. But as you can see, the majority of the country from the last time it was updated was in the green. Green is when new hospital admission levels for COVID-19 are below 10 per 100,000 population. The yellow, which we are seeing some popping up here on the map, more in the southeast, is when new hospital admission levels are between 10 to 19 per 100,000. And on this map, you can see we do have a couple of counties that are in the orange or red, as we call it. And that is when levels, hospital admission levels are above 20 per 100,000. So now we're going to dive a little deeper into our North Carolina data. And this slide here is for hospital admissions. So North Carolina is monitoring the COVID-19, which is the blue bars on this slide, as well as the flu admissions, which is the green. And it's really hard to see the green right now because we are not seeing a lot of admissions in the hospital for flu, but you can see back in the winter when we had the influx of influenza cases. But overall, with the COVID-19, you can see that just in line with the national data, we are seeing a slow, steady increase of hospital admissions due to COVID-19. On this next slide, we can drill down to our regional hospitalization data. And so this is for our mountain area region, which does include Buncombe County and HCA. And once again, you can see the trend is the same, really that slow increase. And then this next slide here is for emergency department visits for all of the respiratory viruses for North Carolina. And so the purple bars are showing for all of the viruses, so COVID, flu, and RSV. And if you're looking at the purple, you can see that slow, steady rise once again. And the blue being the COVID, it is really what is driving the increase that we've been seeing over the last month. And then next, this is the state's, North Carolina's COVID-19 wastewater monitoring. So this is for across the state. And you can see that we have been seeing an increase for a little bit longer period of time here. Starting back in June of 2023, we start to see that slow increase. And our wastewater monitoring is usually that early indicator that we might possibly be seeing a wave. You can look back and see where it also increased over the holidays, which is another time that we typically see a wave. And this is to be expected. We do expect to continue to see waves. This next slide here is where we can drill down to MSD for Buncombe County's wastewater. This one's a little bit harder to see because the Y-axis on the left, the viral gene copies per person is a more spread-out range. But you can see on here the different waves that do occur. And we do have typically seen waves during the holiday season, so Christmas, New Year's time, as well as in the late summer, early fall, we've typically seen another wave. But as you can also see on here, the waves have been getting a little bit smaller. So that's good news. So next, we're going to review community-level prevention strategies and individual-level prevention strategies that we can all do together. So this slide here is what we can do as a community. So this slide here is what we can do as a community. And here, this is for when we are at any level of hospital admissions. So whether we're in the green zone, the yellow zone, or the orange zone, we need to be doing all of these strategies. So of course, we want to promote equitable access to vaccines, testing, masks, treatment, prevention medications, continue community outreach and providing support services, ensuring access to testing through point-of-care and at-home tests, maintaining any ventilation improvements that we've made in buildings, and providing communications and messaging to encourage isolation among people who do test positive. So here at Buncombe County HHS, our immunization clinic is open Monday through Friday, and we do have all vaccines available. We're also utilizing our mobile team out in the community, bringing with us COVID vaccine as soon as we get in our shipment of flu and the new booster. Those will be with our mobile team as well as in our clinic at Forty Cox Avenue. We also have home kits available at Forty Cox Avenue, as well as with our mobile team out in the community. And then, of course, working with our amazing communications team and making sure that people have access to the education and know what to do if they do test positive or they're exposed. And so if we were to move to the yellow, this is where we might recommend doing screening testing in more of our high-risk settings such as congregate living. Long-term care facilities would be an example where we might implement screening testing. And then if we were to move to an orange level, this is where we'd be working with our hospital partners to make sure that we have staffing to care for the people who are in the hospital. Because once again, you want to remember, these recommendations are based on hospital admission levels. And so next, these are individual-level prevention strategies that everybody can do for themselves and for their family, for their neighbors. So of course, we want to stay up to date on our vaccinations. Once again, maintain any ventilation improvements people have made at home. You want to avoid contact with people who have suspected or confirmed COVID-19. And if you do have confirmed COVID-19 or suspect that you have it, you want to follow isolation recommendations. And it's important that you also follow masking recommendations if you're exposed to someone with COVID-19. This is our best way to reduce our community transmission. Also, if you're at high risk of getting very sick, we want you to talk to your provider about additional prevention actions that might be beneficial for you. And so if we were to move into a yellow level, if you were at high risk of getting sick, this is where we might recommend that you wear a high-quality mask when you're indoor and public. Or if you have a household or social contact with someone at high risk for getting sick, you might want to consider self-testing to detect infection before contact with the person. And also consider wearing a high-quality mask when indoors with them. And then if we were to move to that high level, the orange, we would recommend that everyone wear a high-quality mask indoors. And if you're at high risk of getting very sick, you might want to consider avoiding nonessential indoor activities in public where you could be exposed. So based on all this information and what we know about COVID-19, influenza, and RSV, I really just want to circle back to what action steps people should take now to prepare for the upcoming respiratory virus season. So vaccinate. This is one of the easiest and best protection measures that we have. We encourage everyone to catch up, be up to date on their COVID-19 vaccines. We learned late Friday that we do expect to get FDA authorization and CDC recommendations the week of September 11th for the new COVID booster. So hopefully, we will have that in stock at the end of that week at our Forty Cox Avenue location, as well as for our mobile team. We'll work with our communications department to make sure that people are aware when we do have that in stock. Also, we recommend people get their yearly flu vaccine in September or early October. You can get that vaccine at the same time that you receive your COVID vaccine. And we expect our shipment to be in at the end of this week at Forty Cox Avenue, as well as for our mobile team. And then there's good news on the RSV front. There is a new vaccine authorized for those that are sixty years or older. So we recommend that you speak with your provider to see if that vaccine is recommended specifically for you. It is available currently at local pharmacies within our county, and we are expecting to get a shipment into our clinic in the next couple of weeks. And then also, there's a new monoclonal antibody for infants to protect against RSV. We don't expect this to be available until the beginning of October, but parents can go ahead and be talking with their medical providers now to see if this could be an option for their family. And then test and treat. So it's important to have a supply of COVID-19 tests, which we do have free and available at the Buncombe County Health and Human Services site at Forty Cox Avenue. You can walk in and ask the greeters, and they will happily help you with that. You can also visit North Carolina DHHHS COVID-19 Home Test Kit webpage to search for other locations that may have these tests near you. If you do test positive for COVID-19 or you've been exposed, you must continue to follow the CDC guidelines for isolation and masking. Once again, this is going to reduce our community transmission. And then if you do test positive for COVID-19 or the flu and you're in a high-risk group, we want you to contact your healthcare provider who may prescribe medications to treat your illness. And then finally, everyone can follow the basic prevention measures such as washing your hands, covering your nose and mouth if you cough or sneeze, cleaning surfaces often, stay home if you're sick. I hope that everybody is going to have a vibrant and healthy fall. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners? I don't think so. Thank you very much. Alice, we appreciate it. And now we have some new business. I believe Tyler Henry with Strategic Partnerships will be coming to share information on our COVID recovery funding and inter-local agreement.
Good evening, Commissioners. While they're presenting, let's just go ahead and give a overview of what it's gonna be presenting tonight. So basically, we're going to be providing an update on COVID recovery funding activities to date. We're gonna also be reviewing the amount remaining. And we're going to be providing recommendations based on individual input that we've received from you all. So as a reminder to everyone here and to the public that the COVID recovery funding is from the American Rescue Plan Act. It's more specifically the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. It's provided direct flexible spending and funds from US Treasury. And those funds are meant to be used towards recovery from COVID-19 and its negative economic impacts. Excuse me. Buncombe County's total allocation is just over fifty point seven million dollars. As far as rolling awards to date, currently Buncombe County has allocated just over forty-six point three million dollars across forty-nine different projects. And for more specific information about these projects and activities to date, the public is invited to visit our website at buncombecounty.org/recoveryfunds. Bit of a current project breakdown of those forty-nine projects. Buncombe County has held two RFPs processes and invited nonprofits as well as internal departments to apply for funding to lead projects. Out of those forty-nine projects, thirty-five total projects are led by community partners and nonprofits. And that's twenty-three percent of all completed projects, as well as sixty-three percent of all allocated funds so far. On the county department-led project side, fourteen total projects, forty-three percent of projects completed, and thirty-seven percent of allocated funds thus far. Here's a list of the completed projects. Staff has compiled project results, and they are available to the public at our website, buncombecounty.org/recoveryfunding. As far as the amount remaining, we have a bit of a breakdown. So again, the total allocation is just over fifty point seven million dollars allocated so far. It's forty-six point three million and some change. There is a breakdown to the side of when those amounts were allocated. We have also received return funds from four projects that have unspent funds totaling to five hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred twenty-three that you see. The amount remaining to be allocated is just over four point four million. Those allocations are based on individual input that staff has collected from Commissioners. And based on that input, we are making the following recommendations. So reduce and close the COVID contingency project in its entirety. Reduce the broadband from six million dollars to four point five million. The original amount was based on staff's original expectation, understanding of programs from the state such as CAB and Great Grant that Buncombe County could receive to support the broadband infrastructure expansion. Since then, staff has reassessed the project and believed that all of our original project goals can still be completed with this lesser amount. By making those two reductions, this brings the amount remaining up to just over six point nine million. We are then recommending that we are to increase support for the ferry road infrastructure project by two point two million. And then create and fund the Hayek Shelter Support Project. The shelter support expansion supports the addition of forty-three new beds to our community's inventory, as well as supporting continued funding for forty-five beds currently operated at Salvation Army. And then, based on individual input from Commissioners, it is clear that the need for housing and emergency shelter remains a top priority for the board and as a need for the community. Therefore, we are recommending the creation of a general project that would support this priority with the remaining local fiscal recovery funds totaling three point eight million. So as part of the Hayek Shelter Support, there's also an interlocal agreement for your consideration. So the homeless, or excuse me, the Hayek Shelter Support would be eight hundred seventy-five thousand. This is, the cost is being split equally between the city of Asheville and Buncombe County. The city of Asheville is willing to administer the funds by establishing and monitoring contracts with shelter providers selected by Hayek. And those three are the Salvation Army of Asheville and Buncombe, Safe Shelter, and Haywood Street Congregation. The draft interlocal agreement establishes the terms for the funding, including regular performance reporting. For your considerations, staff is requesting that Commissioners consider approval for the changes of COVID recovery funding awarded as listed, and that is reducing COVID contingency in its entirety, reducing the broadband infrastructure expansion by one point five million, increasing ferry road infrastructure by just over two point two million, and establishing new projects, Hayek Shelter Support at eight hundred seventy-five thousand, and then a general project for housing and shelter at three point eight million. Secondly, consider approval of resolution authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement between Buncombe County and the city of Asheville, expanding the availability of emergency shelter beds.
Thank you, Tyler. And Commissioners, questions?
I have one. On the three point eight million housing shelter, what's the breakdown on that? What's going to housing and what's going to shelter? Or have we decided on that yet?
That's just a general allocation, sir. There's no decision yet made on what that would be.
I wanted to make sure.
Anyone else have any questions for Tyler?
I'll just add, Tyler, that I appreciate all the work that staff has done on this. And I do agree that with the broadband, we've been doing a great job of leveraging. And so it looks like we'll be able to meet those goals without that additional funding. And being able to put that into these other high needs at this time definitely seems to make sense to me.
Commissioner, I'll add on the COVID contingency. The state has actually come in and funded all of those initiatives, so that's why there's additional money left over as well. So it's not that we reduced the COVID contingencies. Actually, we got funded from a different source.
Okay, thank you for that clarification as well. And we all know that these are needs for the affordable housing and the shelter within our community. So these look like very important projects for us to be considering. Any other Commissioners have questions?
No questions. Happy to offer a motion.
Okay. Two motions?
All right, start the paragraph. A move that we approve, the changes to the COVID recovery funding awards, I can state them all out if necessary. Reduce the COVID contingency by one million thirteen thousand one hundred sixteen. Reduce broadband by one million five hundred thousand. Increase ferry road by two million two hundred sixty-four thousand seven hundred sixteen. And establish new projects for the Hayek Shelter and Housing as listed, eight hundred seventy-five thousand and three point eight million.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
And I'll make the motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement.
Okay, we had a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. And our next, John Hudson, we have a budget amendment for budget carryforwards.
Good evening. So I have two ordinances that are to carry forward funds budgeted in fiscal year twenty-three to fiscal year 2024 for services or goods ordered and not received or completed prior to June 30th, for economic development incentives where dispersment was not requested by June 30th, and for funding identified to be placed in multi-year funds. This will result in a further appropriate fund balance from the general fund for four million nine hundred twenty-six thousand nine hundred one dollars and additional revenue of twenty thousand two hundred eighty dollars to offset expenditures of four million nine hundred forty-seven dollar, one hundred eighty-one dollars. Additionally, carryforwards for other funds include eighty-two thousand two hundred fifty-six dollars in the 911 Fund, fifty-four thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars in the reappraisal reserve fund, two hundred thirty-four thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars in the transportation fund, and one hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars in the solid waste enterprise fund. The balance of unspent early childhood education funds from fiscal year twenty-three, one hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred eleven dollars will be transferred to the multi-year special projects fund. And three hundred thirty-six thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars will be transferred to the grants fund for multi-year use of adoption promotion funding for the social work division in HHS.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John?
I did just have, so I had a question on the, can you just clarify more about the- I did just have, so I had a question on the, can you just clarify more about the adoption promotion dollars? I'm just curious what that is.
Yes, so in terms of adopting foster children, so the state has traditionally provided adoption promotion dollars based on how many adoptions were made in prior years, and that funding, the state says, can be rolled year over year. We had a mechanism where we would do a estimate balances at the end of the year and do a carryforward every year, and that has not worked for us, so we are moving it to the multi-year fund. Additionally, they also got one of their largest revenues for that at the very end of the year in about eighty, almost eighty, a little over eighty-five thousand dollars. So we're moving the entire balance to the grants fund so that we don't have to do this exercise every year.
Okay, thank you. And so all the general funds are allocated, it's just that they've not been spent yet.
Right, this is money that was left over June thirty for contracts or appeals, that's already outstanding, so we need to go ahead and still pay for those, but we moved that money into the new year.
Okay, and it looked like a large percentage was our fleet.
As you know, where we are.
Yeah, so over half, half of it is related to fleet purchases we've not yet received.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, John. And I think we do have a few board appointments this evening. I'll make a motion to approve Daniel Frain. This is for the Health and Human Services Board.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
I'll move to approve Greg Zorn's and Suzanne Booth to continue serving on the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee.
Motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. And we have one more, let's see. I'll make a motion to appoint Dwayne McAfee to the African-American Heritage Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. And then, do any of the commissioners have any reports on boards or commissions that you're serving on, any updates that you'd like to share with us? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And a couple of announcements. We have September nineteenth at three PM, Commissioner's briefing here in this room. And on September nineteenth at five PM, the Commissioner's Regular Meeting, also here in this room. And I believe, Mr. Frew, do we have reason for a closed session this evening?
Yes, we have a need for a motion to go in a closed session for two matters. One pursuant to one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A three, to consult with attorneys employed or retained by the county in order to retain the attorney-client privilege. And second pursuant to one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A six, that's a personnel matter to discuss conditions of appointment or initial appointment of a public officer or employee at the county, and we're seeking direction from the board this evening.
And...
I'll move that we go in the closed session.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. And since there will not be a need for any votes or direction from the board, once we complete the closed session, we will not return to this chamber. All right, thank you all very much.